We'll call this meeting the Craven County Board of Commissioners' regular session for Monday, May 20, 2024 to order. Madam Clerk, if you will, please call the roll.
Commissioners Smith?
Here.
Commissioner Howard? Commissioner Hunt?
Here.
Commissioner Mark?
Here.
Commissioner Mitchell?
Here.
Vice Chairman Booker?
Here.
Chairman Jones?
Here. Ladies and gentlemen, I would ask you, if you would, to stand together this morning as our county attorney, Mr. Grady, will lead us in prayer. Then I ask you to remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance to the American Life.
To number our days, oh Lord, that we may gain a heart of wisdom. In the narrow boundaries of time, we pray we show our appreciation for the gift that you have given us and would live each day to its fullest. Let us face what you put before us with the strength you so graciously provide for us. May our work be effective, not just in accomplishing the goals we set, but in fulfilling the purpose you have bidden us to carry out. When life is tedious or challenging, may our journey through the uncertainty and around the overwhelming obstacles become an opportunity to be a testimony to your faithfulness and steadfast love. As so many approach us with needs and burdens too heavy to carry alone, may we be quick and willing to share the load. God, only you know what each day will bring us, but in the passing shadow of this day, may the breadth of our lives reveal the eternity of your grace and plan. In your sovereign name we pray, amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Good morning to each of you, and we welcome you to the Board of Commissioners' meeting, which is your meeting. To those that may be viewing online, we also welcome you. I would ask this morning for those of us in attendance to make sure that our cellphones are on silence. We would appreciate it. Commissioners, you have before you your agenda packet. Is there any agenda items you desire to pull or add? Approve the agenda as is.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the agenda. Is any discussion on the motion? Hear none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passed. Item one is the consent agenda. You have the minutes of the May 6, 2024, regular session. You have tax releases and refunds, social services, the senior and sunshine programs rollover forward of unspent funds, budget amendment, and then, D, you have a water department budget amendment. Are there any consent agenda items you desire to pull?
Move to approve.
All right, we have a motion and a second from Commissioner Mark to approve the consent agenda as is. Is any discussion on the motion? Hear none. Madam Clerk, if you will, please call the roll.
Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Commissioner Hunt?
Yes.
Commissioner Mark?
Yes.
Commissioner Mitchell?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Booker?
Yes.
Chairman Jones?
Yes. All right, item two, we have Mr. Clayton Gaskins with us for the Craven Agent Planning Board, Home and Community Care Block Grant Budget for fiscal year 2024-25. Good morning, sir.
Good morning, Commissioners. You have before you the information that Trina prepared, DSS, with the lead agency. We utilize the same amount that we had last year, as you all remember. The NGA, we never get that until June, so we typically use the previous year's amount for allocations to the providers. And Tanya Cedars and Tanya Jordan-Davis met with the providers and have prepared the budget based on last year's, and I believe they pretty much kept those figures as they were from the year before. So if there's any questions about this.
All right, Commissioners, any questions? All right, hear none. Do we have a motion that we approve the presented budget?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the presented budget by the Craven Agent Planning Board. Is any further discussion on the motion? Hear none. Madam Clerk, I'm going to ask you, if you will, please call the roll.
Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Commissioner Hunt?
Yes.
Commissioner Mark?
Yes.
Commissioner Mitchell?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Booker?
Yes.
Chairman Jones?
Yes. Clayton, you want to just give us a little bit of update from your breakfast the other morning?
Sure, sure. Appreciate you all being there and others in the room that were there. Last year, we sold or had 27 tables sponsored. This year, we had 58.
Wow.
So it more than doubled, and as you saw, we had the entire ballroom. And it was amazing. We thank you, Commissioner Jones, for your words of kindness. I knew your granddaddy, but never knew he was involved as Commissioner at the time hospice started in 1980, so that was really nice history that you were able to bring out and share.
On behalf of this board, we thank you for your leadership, for what you've done and continue to do and all you do.
My staff were on a high the rest of the week at the office, talking about it all week, so we appreciate your help.
Great event.
Did we get a final count on what the contributions were?
Not yet. As of Friday, Tammy was still counting money. There was still...
That's a big pile of money to count.
Yes. And we implemented card readers this year, so I think she took in about 4,500 from card readers, which was something new. We didn't have that before. And one of the local businesses called and made a substantial donation one evening, so we'll have within the next month, probably, have an updated amount.
Thank you, sir.
Do you have a ballpark?
As of Friday, I think what she had gotten through so far was around $30,000, but that's without some other donations we're expecting. So last year, we were around $44,000 with a nice contribution Dr. Fisher made.
All right, thank you again.
Thank you again, y'all. Have a good day.
Have a good day. All right, Commissioners, now we're down to Departmental Matters. Item three is the Health Department. We have Mr. Scott Harrelson with us this morning. He's got a number of things for new fees. Good morning, sir.
Yes, a number of things. Good morning, Commissioners. The first item up is some Medicaid reimbursements for our behavioral health program. There are numerous revisions, but all of these are based on increased rates, so you have before you the current rate, the new Medicaid rate, and our new proposed rate for those behavioral health fees.
All right, Commissioners, are there any questions on, A, for the existing fee modifications for behavioral health? All right, hear no questions for the Health Director. Do I have a motion that we approve these modification of fees?
No.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion on the motion? Scott, the only thing, and I reckon it pertains to all of them, so I'll just go ahead and ask it now. Some of them are just a few dollars, you know, but there are some that are increasing significantly, I mean, by a few hundred dollars. Is that due to, I know we hadn't done this in such a long time, or is the Medicaid reimbursement, has it gone up that much over a short period of time?
For these behavioral health reimbursements, they solve it, and they're trying to entice more people to provide services to Medicaid clients, and the rates really needed to be adjusted because even if you're seeing seven or eight a day scheduled, it's tough with some of the reimbursement rates as they stand now. And one thing that I did not mention on this first group of fees is they are actually retroactive back to January 1, 2024, so we can go back and rebuild and recoup a little additional all the way back to January 1.
Okay, great. Any further questions from the board? All right, hear none. We have a motion and a second, no further discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passed. Now we'll go to B.
Yes, sir. The next is very similar. Medicaid increases for reimbursement, but this time, and there were a number of these, and I know that there are too many to go through individually, but they're a combination of vaccines, long-term contraceptives for a Title X family planning clinic, and antibiotics. And again, the Medicaid, it was all predicated on new Medicaid rates for the suggested fees.
Okay.
And these are retroactive back to March 1, if approved.
Okay, any questions for Health Director? All right, hear none. Do I have a motion?
Move to approve.
All right.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the modification of fees for item B. Any further discussion on the motion? Hear none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passed. All right, and C?
Last one. This one is basically lab fees. These are new fees. Three of the procedures that we need, we would not do in-house. Sometimes it's best to outsource. We have some contract rates with LabCorp. Sometimes the machinery or the equipment or the reagents, the cost is just too much. It just makes more sense to outsource. So three of them would be on that contracted rate with LabCorp, and one of them we would do in-house for the four lab procedures, and those are also retroactive back to March 1, 2024.
Any questions for Health Director? All right, hear none. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
We have a motion from Commissioner Hunt, second from Commissioner Smith. Any other discussion on the motion? Hear none, and this is to approve these new fees retroactive back to March 1, 2024. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passed.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Thank you, sir. Anything you had to share with us this morning?
Again, I want to reiterate what Mr. Gaskin said. I thought that the hospice breakfast was just really well done, a lot of people, and it all wrapped up in an hour, and all of our speakers did a great job.
Thank you, sir. We appreciate you. All right, item four is recreation and parks. We have Mr. Billy Wilks with us. Good morning, sir.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. We've got a couple of items for your consideration this morning. The first is a utility billing item, and the City of New Bern made our department aware that they had used over the last three years an incorrect multiplier for our billing, and then they also had not been billing us for one of our accounts. And the amount that they forwarded to our department was $24,776 that they're back billing our department for. In addition to that amount, the remaining months of this fiscal year, as figured out by finance, and kind of was about $15,000, so the total amount was $40,000 that we are asking or requesting a budget amendment for to take care of the back billing and also the projected increase for the three months. We have gone ahead for 2025 and gotten our budget corrected based on what we think the numbers would be going forward.
Okay, any questions from Mr. Wilk?
Were we going to hold up from that?
Not, no, not... Well, there's been some discussion on this, and that, I don't know if county attorney, we failed to get back with you, I think, on this and just kind of get clarification to, I think, the whole board, and that is, I reckon with General Statute or Utilities Commission of North Carolina, how many is it, I mean, how many years can you go back on a customer to receive compensation back?
I'll convert it into a very legal answer. The statute of limitations is three years.
Okay.
So it looks like they are slightly coming in just under the wire for some of it, if not all of it.
Okay, thank you. All right, Commissioner Mitchell?
Yeah, this is for county manager, I think, more so than Mr. Wilk's here. We've had several of these billing issues from the City of New Bern. What is the total-ish thus far?
There he is. So this one is small compared to what we dealt with a couple of years ago.
Right.
And let me just, let me rephrase that, what everybody dealt with a couple of years ago. There was some significant, I'm trying to think of the right word, area, significant errors, I guess, in large business accounts. It affected almost every large business government entity. Craig, if I'm not mistaken, that was in the hundreds of thousands for us.
That was the six figure.
Yeah, it was like 280...
Eighty-four or something.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So then you add in another ballpark, 25-year, roughly $300,000, I'd say, over the two incidents, along with another issue that's out there that's equal to that virtually.
Do we have any confidence that these issues have been corrected, or can we look forward to more of them?
Well, I hope we don't. I have spoken with the city manager about this one specifically. He was going to work with their team over in utility billing. I have not heard exactly what caused it. I mean, the most difficult part of this is there was one meter that wasn't read for three years, okay? And I'll tell you, Billy may not want to say this, so I will, but one of the challenges we had is after that first scenario, we spoke with the city, and they said, hey, let us look at all your accounts. I think they did it with all their large account holders. Let's look at your accounts, and they gave, said, hey, you qualify for these different rates. So those changes went into effect the same time this issue began. So we never saw a new bill that was right. So Billy said, oh, my gosh, we've got these new rates. We're doing great, not knowing that they weren't actually reading one of our meters. So that's how it kind of got by on our side, is again, there were significant rate changes in the reduction.
That's right.
Vice Chair Booker?
Yeah, to your point, Mr. Attorney, as most of you know, I live one block over, and not surprisingly, about a year ago, I got a notification that they were billing me for my electric bill, not as a residence, but on three-phase, I believe, is what they called it, was what it should have been, and I got a three-year back charge. Three years. And I'm sure I'm not the only one that it happened to downtown, but they've got a significant issue throughout that organization, and I don't know what we can do about it. What I had no choice, I had to pay it. So, and they never could explain to me what the difference was between what I was billed and what they were going to bill me. There was no explanation other than, oh, you're a three-phase. Okay, what does that mean? I'm a residence. I'm not a commercial business, so...
Billy?
Couldn't get an answer, but I had to pay it.
Let me make sure, this is only unread and incorrect charges for this fiscal year me. They did not go back past July of '23. Is that correct?
The, well, it's three years.
Okay, it is, okay.
It is three years, yes, sir.
Sorry, my apologies.
Oh, that's okay.
Okay, any other question?
My question is, how can they charge you for services that they don't know that you got the services? If they do not read the meter, how do they know that you even use the service?
Well, they looked at the cumulative usage over the three years and equated it to a rate. So they read it when they put it in, and then they read it when they found out they hadn't been reading it, and whatever was in between, they charged us per, I guess, kilowatt-hour or whatever, whatever their rate is.
All right. Okay, so what's the desire of the board?
Move to approve.
All right, we have a motion. Do I have a second?
You have a second.
All right, motion and a second to approve the budget amendment in an amount of $40,000 in order for the Recreation Parks Department to cover unanticipated increases in the utility bills. Any further discussion on the motion? All right, hear none. Madam Clerk, if you will, please call the roll.
Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Commissioner Hunt?
Yes.
Commissioner Mark?
Yes.
Commissioner Mitchell?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Booker?
Yes.
Chairman Jones?
Yes. Thank you, Billy. That was a little bit of negative news, but you got some good news next.
Oh, yeah. We always like to have good news when we come to see you. So the Harold Bait Foundation was going to be the center of a discussion this morning, and I just wanted to kind of bring that to your attention. I've got the mission up here of the Harold Bait Foundation, kind of what they've done for us, and I'm going to read the mission just real quick. The mission of the Harold Bait Foundation is to offer financial support to the communities of Craven, Pamlico, Jones Counties, as well as East Carolina University. It is, it will be the responsibility of the foundation to ensure and carry out, to the best of the board's ability, the vision of Harold H. Bait, and to administer the charitable gifts wisely to enhance youth education, recreation, and the quality of life for all in these counties. The two, the last two are my favorite, too, recreation and quality of life, obviously, but they've done a great job with us. I've got another couple of slides here I want to share with you on some of the things. You can kind of see some of the stats. We are looking at just over a million dollars, and that's really what we want to celebrate. I always think it's wonderful to stop and celebrate folks that are a part of what we do, and that's over a million dollars in grants since 2001. As you can see, over $600,000 in grants to support our three parks there, Rocky Run, West Craven, and Latham, and over $400,000 to support the Youth Sports League funding that we do as well. Twenty-seven projects have been assisted with funding from the Harold Bait Foundation grants as well. There's just so many that they've done, and I'm going to take to the next slide, Rocky Run Park. Probably the biggest transformation of any of our parks was partly due to funding from the Harold Bait Foundation, as well as this board, and you can see some of those. We have now a full-size basketball court that was added in 2019, a new playground in 2022, as well as a swing set was replaced, and we've added the traditional infant and high-back swing options as well. So pretty much every project we've done, with the exception of the shelter, has been touched by Rocky Run Park, at Rocky Run Park by the Harold Bait Foundation. Next one is West Craven Park. Jan Parker Field was named, and a donation was given by the Harold Bait Foundation to allow that to happen in 2008. We've also added outdoor fitness equipment in 2022, a new playground, which was just installed in 2024, and additional projects include field lighting, picnic shelter, and additional playground equipment, all with support from the Harold Bait Foundation as well. So the next slide, I think, is Creekside. Yep, and then the beach volleyball courts we developed in 2014 have gone on to become one of our fastest-growing areas at Creekside. We have eight courts out there now. Disc golf, which we opened in 2014, is an 18-hole disc golf course at Creekside, an inclusive playground structure that we built in 2016. They were a part of that as well. And then pickleball courts, which we opened last fall to meet the rising demand and pickleball needs and wants, desires to play that game. So we've got six courts at Creekside at this point. Additional projects include swing set, trail projects, waterfront dock assistance, light projects, and a picnic shelter, notably named the Bait Shelter at Creekside Park. So those were the projects. Youth sports programs, they've been a big part of supplying us with funds to help all of these youth sport leagues that we have here, and additionally, a lot more. And what that does is it keeps registration costs down, so folks can afford to play. And I think we've got one last slide, and that's just a celebration cookout. Each of you should have received in your packet an invitation to, we're going to do a picnic in the park for the Harold Bait Foundation. This is something they wanted to do, honestly. So I talked to them about formal presentations, or do you want to be at a location that you've been involved with? And so we're going to have the celebration at Creekside Park at the Bait Shelter, and the reason for that is, is within that little realm, they've assisted with playground, tennis court project, the pickleball court project, and the shelter. So it's four projects just in that little area that they've assisted us with over the years. So that was the thought. It's going to be June 6 from 5 to 7. Obviously, I want to invite each of you to attend. I think it's a good relationship that we have with the Bait Foundation, so I don't celebrate them every year. I celebrate them every day, and that's because I get to see the folks playing and enjoying themselves at our parks, and so when I see that, they're a part of that, and they know that. They hear from me quite often. They hear from our staff quite often, and our appreciation is strong for them, to be honest with you. So I'd welcome your attendance to that event if you can make it.
Billy, first thing, let me say, not only on behalf of this board, but on behalf of every citizen in this county, you've been instrumental in seeking those grants out, and we commend you for doing that. I mean, that takes, you know, where we don't have to allocate taxpayer dollars towards it.
Yes, sir.
And it's going for great news. So thank you, thank you, thank you to you and your team for that. Secondly, I commend you for recognizing the Bait Foundation, just like at our hospice breakfast. They helped sponsor the other morning the breakfast we had there. They do so much for this county and surrounding counties, especially for this county. And so I commend you for recognizing them as you're going to do. Also, though, Commissioners, I talked to the county manager about it this morning, and if you would agree, I'd like to ask also that this board approve a resolution recognizing the Harold Bait Foundation, and just ask staff to draft it. I think they've got some resolutions that we've used in the past. They've got all the information here. If you would be in agreement with that, could I have a motion?
So moved.
Second. I got a motion and a second to draft a resolution, and that day, hopefully, we could present it to them as a board. Any further discussion on the motion? Hear none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passed. So Commissioners, you got anything you want to say, any questions, comments?
I would just echo the chairman's words that I'm very appreciative, we all are, of all the work that you've done to attain these grants and benefit the citizens of Craven County and save them taxpayer dollars. Nominal work. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Commissioners.
Thank you. Have a good day. All right, item five is planning. We have Mr. Chip Bartlett, also Chad Strong, our planning directors, in the room two, and so we welcome you, sir, this morning.
Thank you. Good morning.
Good morning.
So today, we have agenda item related to the county's Essential Single Family Rehab Loan Pool Program, which is funded by the North Carolina Housing Finance Agency. This is a pretty new grant to Craven County. You're kind of used to the CDBGs or block grants where this is, we call it single-family rehab for short. Essentially, it's repairing homes for owner occupants that are low to moderate income. So in the implementation of this project, we, one of the things that's required is to test for lead-based paint as well as radon, which is kind of a new one for us, but the agency does require radon testing for all the properties that are being done throughout the state. So we had a procurement process to solicit lead-based paint and radon testing companies. We put out RFP, mailed it directly to the five regional firms that do lead-based paint testing and radon, as well as putting the ad on the hub website. The first round of proposal, or first round, we only received one proposal from ECS Southeast of Wilmington, and that first request, so we went back out for a second RFP, and at that time, we got a second proposal from Matrix Health and Safety Consultants. So we retained the first proposal, and after two rounds, we had two total. Those letters of interest were reviewed and ranked for the following criteria: experience in lead-based paint and radon testing, their average response time, and their rate schedule. And upon the review of those proposals and the weighted scale, at the end, ultimately, Matrix Health and Safety Consultants scored higher of the two proposals. So I'm here before you today to request a vote to approve Matrix Health and Safety Consultants to perform lead and radon testing for the 2023 Essential Single Family Rehab Loan Pool Program.
All right, Commissioners, do you have any questions first? Will we entertain a motion? All right, hear none. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second. Okay, we have a motion from Commissioner Hunt, second from Commissioner Mark, to approve Matrix Health and Safety Consultants to perform this inspection service. Any further discussion on the motion? Hear none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passed. Chip, thank you, buddy.
Thank you. Chad, also wanted me to mention to you, make an announcement, that I have taken a position with Cape Fear Council of Governments in downtown Wilmington. So with 28 years of driving up here and doing these grants, this will be my last meeting. So it's a testament to Craven County of all the, I think there may have been one year in the last 27 that there wasn't an active grant, housing grant going on. So I do appreciate everything that the county's done for me, all the staff that I've met through the years. It's been great. I'll miss it.
Chip, you've been a great friend to Craven County, and we thank you, and definitely we're going to miss you, but we wish you great success in your new endeavor.
Thank you. Thank you. Appreciate it.
Jack, you want to say?
Well, you know, and I think Chip just underserved himself there a little bit. I'm trying to think of the right word, but he's done so much for the citizens of this county. And you think back to the programs, and I think, when I think Chip, I think about the programs after a hurricane, the work we've done in every commissioner district, every one of them, putting people's houses back together, helping them live a better life. And Chip, you should be commended for your work, sir. Your team over 28 years, and I appreciate what you've done.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Take care. All right, item six, the big one. We've been a lot of hours and been put in to prepare for this. This is the fiscal year 2024, 2025 Proposed Budget Presentation. Mr. Jack White, our county manager.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Feels a little bit like being the lead singer for a rock band in here this morning with the team we got on the budget staff. Give them a minute. All right, the grand delivery. Mr. Chairman, commissioners, thank you for the opportunity to be with you this morning. It's probably the most exciting thing I get to do every year is present the annual budget to you. As normal, I'm going to read you the budget message, which is included. And just as a reminder, we will begin our budget study sessions immediately following this meeting over the next several days to work on this process. So today is May 20th, 2024. Mr. Chairman and members of the Board of Commissioners, it's my privilege to present the recommended Craven County budget for fiscal year 2025. This budget was developed over many months with an in-depth analysis of the local economy and the services required by the citizens of Craven County. The comprehensive analysis balances the ability to leverage available revenue and the effectiveness of each layer of county government. As proposed, this budget incorporates the priorities and policy direction of the Board of Commissioners while continuing to provide the highest quality of services to the citizens of Craven County. The recommended general fund budget for fiscal year 2025 is $154,966,393 without a fund balance appropriation and recommends that the ad valorem tax rate for fiscal year 2025 remain at 44.48 cents per hundred dollars evaluation, or where you set the tax rate after revow last year. So that is the most important sentence of the entire thing right there. No fund balance, no tax increase, and where your budget number is. While no fund balance is appropriated in the recommended budget, local governments are strongly encouraged to maintain adequate fund balances to ensure against unanticipated events that could adversely affect the county's financial position and jeopardize the continuation of county services. Craven County's available fund balance was 36.23% of expenditures as of June 30, 2023, while other similar-sized counties with general fund expenditures of $100 million or more had fund balances averaging 44.63%, with all 100 counties averaging 44.09%. As such, the county continues to budget and operate in a fiscally responsible manner, which provided a fund balance sufficient to accomplish this while remaining within range of our peers statewide. Okay, as we approach fiscal year 2025, the county's financial position remains strong and continues to experience positive growth. Revenues for the first 10 months of the current fiscal year are $7.1 million ahead of last year, while expenditures through April are running virtually the same as last year. The revenue increase is due to the continued growth of the property and sales tax base. Sales tax revenues continue to meet expected growth as collections year-to-date are running 2.9% ahead of last year through April. We do anticipate the continuation, we do not anticipate the continuation of record-setting collections and sales tax as we have over the last couple of years. In future years, sales tax growth is expected to normalize to the additional 2% to 4% annual growth range. New values related to the 2023 countywide revaluation resulted in a $13.7 billion tax base for fiscal year 2024. Continued strong residential and commercial growth within Craven County has resulted in a notable increase in the tax base, which is now projected to be $14.4 billion. The local building economy remains robust, which enhances the ability of Craven County to attract and retain new residences and businesses. Additionally, the county has experienced enhanced revenues from interest earnings as they are $2.7 million, surpassing last year's total by 70.7% through April. While economic conditions continue to trend positively, there is continued economic strain related to inflation, personnel shortages, and supply chain challenges that make our economic conditions volatile in future budget projections. Overall expenditures for the first 10 months are virtually the same as last year, with the largest variances occurring in the general government, transportation, and culture and recreation departments. General government expenditures were down 22.4% mainly due to acquiring the Sudan Temple property last fiscal year. Transportation expenditures were up 24.8% over the last year, primarily due to operating and capital transactions related to the new carts building, which came online in July, and purchasing a new vehicle on the rural operating side. Culture and recreation expenditures were up 19.1% due to improvements at our recreation facilities with the new playground at West Craven Park and six new pickleball courts at Creekside Park, also making up part of this increase for additional operating costs to run the convention center due to price increases for insurance renewals, specifically flood insurance, and because we are hosting more events at the center. Activity at the convention center continues to grow each year as we work toward getting to pre-hurricane Florence numbers. County ended fiscal year 2023 in a strong financial position, adding approximately $5.5 million in the fund balance, higher than projected revenues. And the county's conservative approach to spending limited the use of fund balance. This also provided the ability to transfer $4.4 million into the Capital Reserve Fund, offsetting the $600,000 used for capital items and projects, thus increasing the fund balance in the Capital Reserve Fund by $3.8 million. As we have learned from past events such as Hurricane Florence and the COVID-19 pandemic, funding of the Capital Reserve Fund when excess revenues or savings are realized continues to serve as a critical part of the county's financial position. The Capital Reserve Fund provides for future needs while helping to prevent tax increases and borrowing costs to fund much-needed capital items. Okay, total revenue and expenditures each amount to $154,966,393 in the recommended budget for fiscal year 2025. This represents a decrease of $6.9 million or 4.3% compared to the current budget through the end of April 2024. Property tax revenues are projected at a 5.2% increase over the 2024 budgeted amounts, while sales tax revenues are budgeted at 2% increase over last year's actual collections. Transfers into the general fund from the Capital Reserve Fund are up approximately $1.1 million from the current budget. Capital expenditures and major repair projects were closely examined, and only because of the Capital Reserve Fund, many were able to be funded. Overall, capital outlay costs are up $1.3 million compared to the current budget. Out of the total $6.8 million in capital expenditures budgeted for fiscal year 2025, $4.2 million is funded with transfers from the Capital Reserve Fund. Most capital expenditures funded in the budget include repairing or replacing vital infrastructure and technology, facilities, and recreational improvements. Total salaries and benefits in the recommended budget are $4.6 million higher than the current adopted budget. The fiscal 2025 budget continues the investment in the county's greatest asset by recommending a 4.5% cost of living increase for all county employees. This accounts for both increases resulting from inflation while also maintaining the competitiveness of Craven County in the current labor market. Recommended in the fiscal 2025 budget are a total of 11 new full-time positions: one maintenance administrative assistant, one animal shelter attendant, two deputy sheriff patrol, one building code inspector, one assistant county engineer, one DSS attorney, one social worker three, one social worker three on-call, one social work I A N T, and one recreation maintenance technician. Total benefit costs are budgeted at approximately $1.3 million higher than the current fiscal year, mostly due to increases in the county's health and dental premiums and retirement system rates. So far this year, health insurance claims are trending lower than last year by 4.6%. However, our reinsurance renewal costs have increased by 13%. To help offset these additional costs in the county's self-insured plan, the budget includes a 5% increase in both the county and employee premiums. The retirement system employer contribution rates will also increase by 0.74% for general employees and 1% for law enforcement employees effective July 1st, 2024. This accounts for $721,000 of the total increase in benefit costs in next year's budget. Craven County is expected to receive $15,569,048 in opioid settlement funds incrementally from fiscal year 2022, '23 through fiscal year 2038, '23, '29 to abate and alleviate the impacts of the opioid epidemic. These funds are accompanied by an extensive set of complex requirements established by the Memorandum of Agreement between the State of North Carolina and local governments on proceeds related to the settlement of opioid litigations, or better known as the MOA. Craven County's opioid remediation efforts targeting this ever-evolving epidemic, coupled with the MOA requirements necessitated the development of a new department last year, the opioid epidemic response, and an opioid program manager position dedicated to these duties. The opioid epidemic response program includes $169,049 to continue the county's current opioid education and outreach efforts that began in 2018, and it includes $525,314 of opioid settlement funds to support the opioid program manager position and opioid remediation strategies outlined in the MOA. Opioid remediation strategies funded with opioid settlement funds in this budget include a post-overdose response team in conjunction with Carolina East Hospital Recovery Housing Support and collaborative strategic planning. Craven County is currently in the process of engaging with a diverse array of stakeholders to complete a collaborative strategic plan to identify additional strategies to target Craven County's specific needs. Overall, the current expense funding for Craven County schools is recommended at $23,279,069, a $1,274,078 increase per the Board of Education's request, and continues the county's investment and support for our local education system. Craven County schools faces complex and varied budget challenges similar to those of Craven County. While the recommended funding amount continues Craven County's financial commitment to the school system, long-term issues will need to be addressed in future budgets. As revenues from federal and state sources tied to enrollment numbers continue to decline, the cost to operate and maintain aging school facilities does not. This issue will be ongoing and will likely need to be addressed over the next several budget cycles. Forecasted enrollment numbers by Craven County schools continue to show a decline in enrollment trends that will continue over the next several years in all grade levels. The current budget request funds retirement system contributions at 25.52%. Healthcare premiums at $8,095 per employee, and the local supplement at 10.5%. The capital outlay requested is $2,106,039, an increase of $10,563 from the current year's budget. It includes one Category 1 capital project over $100,000 to upgrade HVAC controls at West Craven High School. Various other capital repairs and enhancements throughout the school system include paving, safety and security upgrades, fencing work, and facility improvements. Also included in the requested capital outlay is $1,105,549, which continues the funding for the system's Apple iPad lease agreement. The proposed budget funds Craven Community College requesting current expense at $4,854,587, representing an increase of $310,958 over the current year. The requested increase will go towards additional operating and personnel costs for salaries, retirement, health benefits, utilities, and insurance. Capital outlay for the college was budgeted at the previously agreed-upon baseline allocation of $500,000. This year's projects include replacing the 140-ton chiller at Bait Hall, refurbishing the vault center, repairing the parking lot and road, and upgrading the Brock Hall elevator. Okay, here toward the end. Proposed fiscal year 2025 budget provides balance and fiscal responsibility in addressing the many needs across the county while maintaining the lowest tax rate possible for the citizens of Craven County. Craven County values the competitive edge maintaining a low tax rate offers in areas such as economic development and retirement relocations. As always, there is still the possibility that General Assembly may take actions that could affect the county budget. We will continue to monitor those for those potential impacts. However, I believe Craven County continues to be well-positioned fiscally to address any challenges that may come forward. My favorite part of this, I commend the department heads, and some of them are here with us this morning, their staff, the agencies, the outside groups that we work with, for their cooperation and valuable assistance in this process. I want to particularly thank our finance director, Craig Warren, our assistant county manager, Jean Hodges, our human resources director, Amber Parker, IT director, Steve Bennett, fiscal grant specialist, Sarah Williams, and our budget analyst, LaShelle Bun, for their essential contributions in developing this budget. I look forward to working with the Board of Commissioners and finalizing the fiscal year 2025 budget. The recommended budget will immediately be available for public inspection in the manager's office and posted on the county website. I recommend that the board schedule a public hearing at 6:00 p.m. on Monday, June 3rd, 2024, and conduct budget work sessions as required. Submitted today.
All right, commissioners, you've heard the request from the county manager to set the public hearing for the 24, '25 budget for June 3rd, 2024 at 6:00 p.m. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
I have a motion and a second to set the public hearing. Any further discussion on the motion? Hear none, all those in favor, signify, saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passed, all right? Commissioners, you've received the budget from the county manager. We will go into budget discussions immediately after this meeting today. We will have a recess, and so we will begin that process for the remainder of the week until we conclude. But do you have any questions for the county manager on it at this time? Any comments? All right, hear none. Jack, I commend you and your staff. I know you've put in a lot of hours into it. Folks, you know, probably don't realize, but by the time you finish one budget, you're almost in the process of beginning the process for the next fiscal year's budget.
Got it.
There's a lot of time that is put in, not only by everyone in this room, but, you know, you go to the sheriff and his staff, and recreation, and planning, and DSS, with the amount of time they spend. And so it's a lot of hours put into this, sweat too, and strong discussions.
That's right.
And so, but thank you all for your presentation. And we as a board, this is one of, if not the most important thing that we have to do as a board of commissioners, is what is before us right here today. So, all right, thank you, sir. All right, commissioners, we will now go to item seven of appointments. You have before you pending, current, and upcoming. Does any commissioner have any pending appointments here for any of these listed? All right, hear none, then we will go to current. The first one is for the emergency medical services. Both are eligible for reappointment. You have the first one of Jonathan Stevens, who is representative of Craven Community College, what's his desire of the board?
Recommend that we reappoint.
Okay, we have a nomination of Mr. Stevens. Is there any additional nominations? Hear none, we were set by acclamation. The next is Candace Piera, who is from New Bern Communications. What's his desire of the board?
Recommend to me appoint.
Okay, we have the nomination. Is there any additional nominations from the floor? Hear none, we will accept Candace Piera. All right, next is the Fireman's Relief Fund. Commissioners, I did recognize that this is from Township Six. I do believe that Commissioner Howard is probably the commissioner. Is there any urgency that we do this today? Could we defer it to our next meeting? Would y'all be in agreement with that? I think we owe him that as we would any commissioner if we could. So we'll defer consideration of this to our next meeting and give him the opportunity to have a say in that. All right, then we will go to the Down East Regional Planning Organization. We have the alternate member, Dread Mitchell, who's the mayor of Co-City. I would just state for the record that this has to be, you have to have representation on this board from Vanceburg, Dover, and Co-City, correct, county manager?
Yes, sir.
And so he would be one of the representatives for that area. I would ask the board, I would nominate him. Are there any additional nominations? Right, hear none, we were set by acclamation, and I thank you for that. All right, any other current that we forgot? All right, you see the upcoming list there, commissioners. We got right many coming up in the near future. Please take note of those, and let's have conversations as we go forward. All right, anything else under appointments today? All right, hear none. Next, we will go to the county attorney's report, Mr. Eric Greedy. Good morning, sir.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners. I have one item for your consideration this morning. It is a final approval of a sale of county-owned property located at 165 E Street in Bridgeton, parcel number 2-004-009. The commissioners may recollect. The county has owned this parcel since 1952. We acquired it through a tax foreclosure then. So some of the typical information that would be in your packet from a more recent tax foreclosure acquisition is not available. This was also the parcel that we had a lower initial bid, and the board asked us to revisit that and brought back the $10,000 bid, which you gave preliminary approval to some weeks ago. It's my recommendation to the county that you give this final approval so we can close the deal and get it back on the tax rolls.
So moved.
Second. All right, we have a motion and a second to adopt a resolution approving conveyance of parcel number 2-004-009. Any further discussion on the motion? Hear none, all those in favor signify, saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passed.
Concludes my report.
Thank you, sir. All right, item nine, county manager's report.
There's two things I was excited about today. Behind me is Shane Deegan. Shane joined us last Wednesday, so this is his fourth day. What a great time to start, and we're pulling the budget out and taking a look at everything we do. We're so excited to have Shane in the office. He just graduated from UNC Chapel Hill with an MPA, I guess, a week ago, a little over a week ago, so he's moving quick. He's your newest resident, and I'm just going to give him a minute just to introduce himself to you and let you know what, who he is.
Good morning.
Good morning. I think I've met most of you, but I haven't. Hello. I'm from upstate New York originally, went to a small school, Oniana, and I worked for a county in New York. If you've ever, if you're a baseball fan, the Hall of Fame, Cooperstown, I worked right in the village, Cooperstown, for three years as a solid waste coordinator. Came down here to get my MPA, and Jack has been fortunate enough to give me the chance in this role, so I'm looking forward to serving you, serving the people of Craven, and thank you. Appreciate it.
Mr. Chairman, again, we're so excited to have Shane. We got a lot going on, and he's jumped right in with us, so that's all I have today unless you have questions for me.
Any questions from the board?
Thank you.
Thank you. Welcome aboard, Shane. Glad to have you. All right, item 10 is commissioners' report. We'll begin, Commissioner Mitchell.
We have a long day, so nothing to report.
All right. Vice Chair Booker?
Nothing.
All right, Commissioner Mark.
Sadly, I went to a precinct meeting in Fairfield Harbor. There was about 45 constituents there. Steve Tyson showed up and gave a little insight on what's going on in the state, and it was very successful. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Hunt.
I would just like to thank commanding officer from Marine Corps Air Station Cherry Point for a phenomenal airshow that was put on. If anyone missed it, we missed a lot of last-time events and a lot of first-time events, and I loved it, and I hope we have more. That's all I've got.
Thank you. Mr. Smith.
Nothing.
All right. Only item I want to recognize, Sheriff, if you've got anything this morning you want to share, you don't have to, but I always want to give you the opportunity.
No, sir. Everything's good. I did want to commend Jack and his team on outstanding legend and a very smooth process of getting there. All right, my office.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate your leadership. All right, that will conclude commissioners' reports this morning. We have been requested to go in closed session pursuant to North Carolina General Statute 143-318, 11A3, to preserve the attorney-client privilege. Do we have a motion?
So moved.
I have a motion and a second to go into closed session. Any discussion on the motion? Hear none, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, we will give about five minutes, and we will go in closed session.